Okay, we're gonna go into public comments, and we had quite a few public comments. And I'd like to ask, you know, of course, this poor little councilman, and I'm kind of reading still behind the ears, so I'd like to ask Mr. Vernon to kind of help us on, because we have a lot of comments, we've got a lot of things on the agenda, and we'd like to, you know, make sure that everybody gets heard, but we can do this in an orderly fashion.
The public knows what's going to be discussed, and so that each council member knows what is going to be discussed. But the primary and only purpose of a council meeting is for the city council to conduct its business, and that business consists of making a budget, hiring and firing of certain personnel, subject to civil service laws and other laws, to pass resolutions and to pass ordinances, and to make other recommendations for the operation of the city. And at this time, the council has an ordinance in effect that says that only items that, excuse me, no item can be repeated within a six-month period.
Good evening. My name is Francesca Simeon. I put my name on the ballot today to speak in reference to the basketball plan. My problem with today, what's going on with the children, I don't see nothing in place for them, nothing. There's nothing here for them, and I'm not speaking on wards, I'm speaking as a community. Enough is enough. We losing our children to the streets, and nobody is stepping up to the plate, and it's time, there's nothing here for them to do. Y'all taking everything away, and all y'all giving them is jail cells. And I'm sorry to say, I refuse to see another child. After my brother's death at eighteen, I refuse to see another child lose their life behind a gunshot. Why? Because it's not like it used to be where a village raised a child. We lost that. Nowadays, if we go to somebody's child and try to correct them, the whole community wanna come to fight. It's not like it used to be, and we need to get that back as a community, because we are losing our younger generation, and enough is enough.
Mr. Sidney Brown?
Good evening. I'm here on part of the police. Last meeting, Mr. Moody was here, he wasn't. Next day, the police come to my house, Officer Frank and Tattoo. Their excuse was, I had company at my house. I could have who I wanted at my house. Mr. Dagle passed by and saw me at my house, he called Tattoo and A.J. to come to my house for your reason, because I had company, okay? That's your man. No, no reason for coming to my house, none. When I did ask him, we got a complaint. I said, "Complaint about what? Nobody standing next door to my house, there's not nobody on the other side?" "You had company at your house earlier?" I said, "If I did, it's my business." Officer A.J. Frank said that. Well, we had a complaint. I said, "What, what is it?" He still couldn't tell me. Before he left, he said the same what I just said. "You had company at your house earlier today." And I said, "And?" He left. All right. April eighteenth of last year, Mr. Hidalgo and A.J. Frank come to my house for a warrant. Warrant wasn't showed to me, they tore my house up with no search warrant or nothing. The police is getting outrageous here. They getting outrageous. We hired somebody to take care of a cheat, and it's not working. It's not working. We are all being hurt. And she just mentioned about her brother getting killed, this happened here in Eunice too. That happened in Branch, what she was talking about. Everything happened here in Eunice too because of the police, because of the cops, and they're not protecting us at all. We can't do nothing, nothing. We can't even talk to the police. Now, they tell you to shut your mouth, let me talk. No, it's enough, man. I was harassed by Officer Frank twenty-ten, he attacked me. You know, nothing was done about it. I'm fed up. We fed up. We fed up, that's true, black and white, and Mexicans, you got Mexicans here all too. Oh, we fed up. I'm done, my speech is not up, and I'm done. I see what I had to say.
To Mr. Vasro, presiding of office members, I have something to say just quickly here. The last time we were here, we discussed some things about the police department, and I was told last year, last meeting, I think Ms. Simpson had brought up the hiring of Mr. Hidalgo, and that's how the meeting ended when I walked out. Seems as though we, some question I have here, for the people we hiring, all certified, have been passed a psychological testing, and understanding of what the police work is about, or they sent off to school. Why did the gentleman leave his plaque? What is the statistics on black and white arrests in Eunice? Oh, you make up thirty percent? And when I went to the jail, you had thirty-nine and forty blacks in jail and one white? It doesn't jive with me. Are all these employed officers, I say that certified. Now, here I have Ms. Olina Roberts, who came by, who was offered, who was manhandled at a funeral at New Zion Church. Olina Roberts, she was picked up, put in the car, manhandled by Officer Frank, and put in the car, cursed her out with his son in the car, took her up to his house, and got in the police car, and brought her to jail. She spent a couple of days in jail. Something is wrong with that picture. We have some good officers here, and I know some of them, they nice, good, decent, and very polite, but you got about four people who are bad news, and they give this community a bad, a bad name, rep. And we're saying that if that's to stop, unless somebody's gonna get hurt, and then we gonna say, the black folks don't wanna pay, follow the law. Pay me a police officer's out. We all are citizens, we all pay our tax, we want the same protection under the law. Thank you.
My name's Alexander Lejeune. I moved to Eunice to attend school at LSU for computer science. I was living in a bingo village apartment, and on December twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve, last year's Christmas Eve, I had the unfortunate run-in with Eunice PD that can be found online. They were facilitating an illegal eviction on the spot. My landlord decided to evict me because I had a friend over who was suicidal, and I've known the guy for twelve years, and I didn't wanna lose him. I brought him over to my apartment, knowing it was against policy to have a guest that day, but I calmed him down, and he was good to go by the next day, and we were planning on heading out. Unfortunately, psychotic individual pulled the fire alarms, and we woke up around seven AM, nine AM, and EPD show up and start helping facilitating the illegal eviction on the spot of him. So I recorded the incident for my sake and for accountability, and on the way out, when things started to get bad, it was a bit rude, it was a bit distasteful, but my anger had started to get up there, and I gave Lieutenant Young the finger, letting him know that I was displeased with his service there. It was an act that I considered nonverbal communication and protected by the First Amendment. I started walking back to my car, and suddenly I was slammed into the hood of a patrol unit. I was hauled off to the Eunice jail, I was put in general population, and I argued with some of the people there, because I was angry. I wanted to know why I was being kidnapped by my public officials for a First Amendment protected activity. The next night, I was released with hair less than a centimeter in length for sanitary purposes. My hair was clean, it was as clean as any of the females that had been booked in that day, but it was long. I had three additional charges typed on, out of nowhere, and whenever I came to my arraignment, I read the police report, and I was shocked at what I read. Apparently, I had yelled F-U to the officer, apparently my finger was right in his face, apparently I resisted arrest and pulled away from the officer, even though I wasn't told I was under arrest after I was slammed into the patrol unit. These are activities I've never, I've never experienced in my life, and they frighten me. These are people I consider there to protect and serve. You're not there to protect and serve anymore, Chief DS. You're there to protect your own agenda, to serve. I started recording the police. May I have additional two minutes?
No, time's up, three minutes.
Everybody talks about wanting to be one community. Let's be one community. I mean, you know, stop breaking the law. This Saturday night, had two drug busts right inside my parking complex, had to be called out in the night so I could go.
That's not a crime.
Excuse me, hold on, let me speak, okay?
You know, I mean, that's the way it is, you know? Say one community, one community, all this stuff. Let's act like one community, let's help each other out, all the time, all the time, harassment, police harassment, police harassment, police harassment. It just gets old, and then about hearing about the black-white thing too. It just gets so old all the time, all the time, all the time, you know? And I just don't understand it, why, if you get troubled by the police officers, they're harassing, and you have to bring to a board meeting, all this other stuff and everything. Take your legs, you done with your bigs, you can take your legs for it. I mean, I just don't understand. He was talking about everybody being one community, and everything coming together, or somebody's gonna get hurt, you know, all this stuff, I mean, what is that? You know, it doesn't make any sense. Nobody needs to get hurt, I mean, everybody just needs to work together, and if you do get arrested, or you do get stopped by the police for something you weren't supposed to be doing, you can take your legs for it. That's just how I feel about it, you know? I just get so tired of hearing harassment, harassment, I hear it all the time in my complex. "Well, the police are, well, the police are harassing me, the police are harassing me, the police are harassing me." They're not harassing me, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're doing their job. Most of the time, it's about drugs, and I have so many people in my complex, you know, that they just, they won't pay their way, you know, but they wanna go out and buy drugs with their money. So I'd like to speak, I didn't say anything while everybody else is speaking.
My point is, is the police aren't harassing me while they're doing their job, thank you.
Here to talk about money. Just wanna real quickly say that one year, going fiscal year, we spent like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars on sewer plants. Didn't get out of budget, didn't raise taxes. Don't worry, you got two choices if you're passing the budget, being bucks and a regular. Either cut back or raise taxes. Don't raise taxes, town's got enough money.
Request for Chief DS for hiring information on each hire of police officers that have not been brought to the council. I think that we have gotten a list, I'm not gonna go through the list, but all those officers at some time or another will have to be brought before the council for approval by the council. With that said, by those officers having to come before the council for hire, and what I want is the council members to basically look at the list, and some of the items that I've placed on the agenda, and I have interviewed five people, and we have officers on that list who have had some encounters, so actually, before they become appointed or hired, or should I say appointed, because they've already been hired, we have a list, and some have been appointed, but they haven't been actually brought before the council for us to vote on it. And that's why I go to number sixteen, with harassment of citizens by police officers. Now, I just wanna briefly say so I can get on with the item that I have on the agenda. I know that Mr. McManus came out and read something about what council business is and what the council meeting pertains to, and I figure if we hire police officers, then it is city's business, and if citizens that we have hired officers and we have placed them within the community, they are experiencing, the citizens are experiencing some problems or issues within their community, then they have to come back where it started, and where it started is here. So I know that, I understand what it says and how it's written out, and it basically came about because the chief went to Mr. McManus for an item that I had on the agenda, and if I should be talking about that item again. Well, it wasn't the same item as what I talked about last month. Last month, I talked about the southeast part and issues with the police department. This time, it's harassment by citizens of police officers, and the reason I had the five people, or the six that I interviewed with is because one officer was supposed to be brought back before the council, but I don't think that that is gonna happen, but in case it does happen, or at any given time, I'm gonna call the individuals up that I wanted to let you know. And before they begin to speak, this is what I wanna say. Yes, there are people who break the law, and there are people who are doing wrong. I'm not for people who are breaking the law and doing wrong. There are some people within the community who have been harassed, they don't have a rap sheet, they're not criminals, they're law-abiding citizens. I know some of these people, and what I did was, when I stepped out in the community to do some interviews and talk and poll people, I pulled those individuals to come here tonight so you could get a general idea of it is not people who have a long rap sheet, people who are breaking the law every day. I'm talking about law-abiding, tax-paying citizens. And several of them belong to my church, and when I started polling, I took a close look at it, and I said, "Okay, well, you know, we've been told the other side that these people are criminals and that they're breaking the law, and that's why they're being handled the way they're being handled." But even if they're breaking the law, you still have to have their rights, and at the same time, I've said this in the past, when a police officer goes to arrest someone, it is not his job to try that person at that time. There's a judicial, there's a judicial system in place to try that individual. If you violate his civil rights, nine times out of ten, he's gonna walk when he gets to court because his civil rights have been violated. The first person that, individuals that I'd like to call up is Mr. John Thibodeau and his son, Joshua Thibodeau.
How many minutes you wanna let us have combined?
Well, you each can speak, but I wanna pose some questions as you speak, Mr. Thibodeau. So if you want your son to speak first, or you wanna speak first? It's either one of you, you can speak first, you can go ahead and speak first.
All right, I would like to say good evening to everybody here. My name is John G. Thibodeau, and I reside at seven twenty-one side Martin Luther King here in Eunice. And approximately three weeks to a month ago, there was a situation at my residence that upset me very, very much. That's the first time something like this ever happened to me or my family since we lived here in Eunice, and that's been a number of years. Okay, I'm a law-abiding citizen, I've never committed any crimes in my whole life, I've been a law-abiding citizen all my life, but the situation that, although it's at my residence, it tend to make a good person go bad. Can I tell you, because of this, I had to contain myself, because what was going through my mind at the time, I don't think I need to say what it is, you're looking at me, you can tell. Look, all I can say is, if this ever happens again to me and mine, you push me, and I'm gonna act on it.
Mr. Thibodeau, can you kinda tell a little bit about what happened to you and your son?
I was sitting down at, at my home, in my recliner, relaxing, because I had been doing things in my home that I needed a little break, so I was sitting down relaxing, and I saw lights flashing on the front door open, and I saw lights flashing on the, on my door. So at that time, it was a time when school was letting out, and on my street is a one-way, and I thought maybe someone was getting pulled over for coming down the one-way, and I got up and I went and looked through my door, and what did I see? Was an officer harassing my son in my yard. He pulled up in my yard, which I asked him to get, I'm not gonna say what I said. I asked him, would he please remove himself off of my property? You're supposed to be on the street. Not on, not on my property. So, when I came outside, when I saw this, he was patting my son, he was making gestures, I heard him say, "I'm telling you to get in the back of your car." When I heard that, I immediately went outside. When I went outside underneath my carport to go see what was happening, I asked him, what was this all about? He said, "Sir, you get back in your house." I said, "What'd you say? What did you say?" He said, "Sir, you get back in your house." I said, "Man, I'm not going no, I'm not going no damn way. You in my yard on my property, you telling me to get back in my house?" I said, "You get your ass off of my property right now. You in my yard harassing my son to arrest my son, to get my son a ticket, and this is the third time this police officer's been harassing my son." Now, I've got enough of it, and as I said before, you push me, I'm gonna act on it. Now, I'm not gonna have this anymore. Chief DS is not here, he ran. But he made a quick exit. I said, "Man, what'd you say?" Now, at that moment, something went off in my head, and what I thought of doing... To have a person come in my property and telling me, and curse at me, telling me to get back in my house? Mr. Burson, you know, you know our family. We never had run into with the police or created any problems in yours? But I'm, I'm, DS is gone, he's not there, but I'm, either this man do something by his officers, the way they conduct themselves?
That's right.
The majority of them on the police force need to go back to school and learn manners and respect. Go talk to people like, "Man, you a piece of trash." And I'm not gonna add that, I know damn well that I'm not a piece of trash, and the way that officer approached us, like we were criminals, and all the people across the street, the teachers, the kids, parents that was lined up to pick up the kids, they were looking at us, getting out the car, looking over my head, see what was going on, like we were criminals, like we committed a crime. You looking at me, officer? You were supposed to be, what's this person's name? Auburn? Whatever his name is.
That's not good.
That's good, that's good. We don't need to point them, point them out.
Y'all had a silly grin on your face.
That's fine.
I think I wasn't looking. I went off to college, maintained on the dean's list, that's a three-point-five GPA average. I've got two degrees. I was never raised to see color. If you can look at my daddy, you can see he got white phone in his, this is what I got, I got a phone in me. I wasn't raised to see color, but we must understand, racism exists, but you keep pointing the finger. We as a people, as a black people, we gotta educate one another, teach these kids African-American history, because they're not gonna get it in school. And Black History Month ain't February, it's every month. If you can do that, you ain't gotta worry about no cop profile. These kids let them know they can be doctors, lawyers, they can be whoever they wanna be. Stop pointing the finger at the white man, stop. You're not gonna be racism, racism was here when law was here. You're not gonna change that, you can't change ignorance, it's a steal, but what you can change, and what they can't take from you is your mind, and you the man at the table. You understand? I'm talking to my people.
Thank you. I'm glad, but I have a couple of people that are in.
And I wanna say one more thing, so Officer Albany, I'm gonna ask you to leave me alone, because as long as I've been, in the twelve years I've been coming back here, the officer has never stopped me. This man has stopped me three times. I'm asking you to leave me alone.
I guess that, before Mr. Thibodeau began speaking, the reason that I did ask, I thank you, Mr. John and Josh for coming, because there are some pressing issues that are going on within my community, and I wanted to give you a general idea. We're gonna get the names of those officers, because those officers will have to appear on that, from the list that the council has. Okay, Mr. Thibodeau, if you can, Mr. Thibodeau's gonna be kinda brief and just kinda tell a little bit about his situation and what happened.
Let me first acknowledge the council members of each ward, and to say to you, thanks for our job well done. I know sometimes it's not easy, but I think thus far, all of you have done is empowering the job, improving Eunice in the right direction. The department that you work in, I think the community is very satisfied with the department, that all of you have done an excellent job. But it's one department that diminishes everything that all of you are doing, and it's the police department. When I say the police department, we have some excellent officers of the police department, we all acknowledge that, but we also have three or four of the police officers that's bringing shame to Eunice, Louisiana, on the Louisiana map. You know, you go to different cities, police department is mentioned as being the laughing stock for Eunice, and that diminishes the good work that all of you are doing. Being the state trooper patrolling the highways of Louisiana is different from encountering the city, where you're dealing with the whole community. He has a lack of knowledge for that. He has a lack of knowledge of understanding of his department, administrative-wise. When he receive a complaint in any one of the offices, he should have a folder on all his police... You're not gonna change that, you can't change ignorance, it's instilled. But what you can change and what they can't take from you is your mind and the will for you to be educated. I'm talking to my people.
Joshua.
You understand?
Thank you, I'm glad, but I have a couple of people that are there.
And I wanna say one more thing, so Officer Albany, I'm gonna ask you to leave me alone. Because as long as I've been, in the twelve years I've been becoming a black man, officer has never stopped me. This man has stopped me three times. I'm asking you to leave me alone.
I guess that, um, before Mr. Thibodeau began speaking, the reason that I did ask, I thank you, uh, Mr. John and Josh for coming because, um, there are some pressing issues that are going on within my community and I wanted to give you a general idea. We're gonna get the names of those officers because those officers will have to appear, uh, on that from the list that the council has. Okay, Mister Thibodeau, he can, Mister Thibodeau's gonna be kinda breathing, just kinda tell a little bit about, uh, his situation and what happened.
Let me first acknowledge the councilman of each ward and to say to you, thanks for a job well done. I know sometimes it's not easy. But I think thus far, all of you have done exemplary job in moving Eunice in the right direction. The department that you work in, I think the community is very satisfied with the department that all of you have done an excellent job. There's one department that diminishes everything that all of you are doing and it's the police department. When I say the police department, we have some excellent officers in the police department. We all acknowledge that. But we also have three or four of the police officers that's bringing shame to Eunice, Louisiana, on the Louisiana map. You know, you go to different cities, police department is mentioned as being the laughing stock for Eunice. And that diminishes the good work that all of you are doing. Being the state trooper patrolling the highways of Louisiana, it's different from encountering the city where you're dealing with the whole community. He has a lack of knowledge for that. He has a lack of knowledge of understanding of his department administrative wise. When he receive a complaint in any one of the offices, he should have a folder on all of police officers. And when the community makes a complaint on any police officer, he should document that. He should document. And at some point, he need to meet with the police officers one-on-one and find out what's the problem. Cause we have a lot of good police officers. If you keep a rotten orange or apple in the bag, guess what's gonna happen, the rest of them. And it tells me one thing, if the chief cannot understand, if he cannot foresee the problem that three or four of his officers is creating in this town, there's something is wrong with it. Either he doesn't have the understanding to correct the problem or he's a part of the problem. It is time for the police department to be a police department there to serve the people. And when chief took his oath to go do what? To protect every citizen of this town. First, he must understand that the badges officers wear and the guns does not make them a police officer. It comes from the heart. First, they're peace officer. You try to bring peace to those who've been disrupted. Then if it doesn't work, then you become a police officer. We all taxpayer in this town. We're all human beings, we all share the same God with different colors.
And Mister Thibodeau, did you want to, uh, elaborate on, uh?
Let me elaborate, I thought my brother was gonna start a fight because he was there at two thirty in the morning when four police officers went and knocked on my mom's door looking for my brother's daughter. And until today, that young lady will come before the court and say that she was not around my mom's, her grandmother's house. It lied to my brother, saying that she was sitting on the porch. That's why they were there. And they were making a false statement. My niece never did approach my mom's house at two thirty that morning. Woke my brother, banged on the door. My brother woke up, you know, when you sleeping, your body is not right. They wanted to come in, so my brother said, this is not my house, I'm living with my elderly mother. And by the way, my mom is ninety-five years old. She had burned in this April, she's ninety-six. They kept, my brother's trying to make them understand that. At this time in the morning, I have elderly mother right there in her room sleeping. I'm nice that you all not disturb her. They wasn't taking nothing else. They proceeded until he said to come on in. They went in my mom's bedroom, took the flashlight, ninety-five oh one, shine in her eyes. My brother called me the next day. I went check on my mom, she said, I feel bad. I said, what, why you feel bad? She said the police officer came in my room, two thirty in the morning, shone a light in my face, she got scared, her heart stopped beating fast. My application. I in turn called her doctor. First thing the doctor told me, the least thing could have happened, she going into cardiac arrest. Now, if my mom would've died, the city of Eunice would've been bankrupt.
People that I had, I had two people to speak on harassment and I had two people that were gonna speak on, on Mr. Haddago, but it did not come up tonight. So, uh, and obviously, the chief left. But, uh, just, so the council just had a general, he just wanted to tell some of the harassment, it fell under harassment, so, um, he said you just need three minutes.
All I need is three minutes. I know just three minutes, it don't take three minutes for me to write a song. But anyway, how many of you know who I am before I even? Everybody know who I am. Yeah, I think, well, anyway, I got arrested and when I got arrested, I went to the chief about it, well, he was part of it. But then again, he comes and say, well, Joe, they don't know who you are. And to me, just that statement alone is just crazy. But I missed the last meeting that y'all had and I did watch it on television. And from my understanding, uh, Mr. Haddago is trying to get back on the police force. And me personally, I'm gonna just go straight out and say, I think it's a bad thing to do because the guy's dangerous. And when you have a dangerous person dealing with the community, somebody's likely to get hurt, whether it's on this side or that side. Okay, well, plain and simple, real short, I had an encounter with him, uh, one, this happened one morning, early one morning, six thirty in the morning.
Speak up, the longer you wanna tell the council, the rest, I'm, I'm not on the council, I'm just the attorney.
Okay, I'm.
I'm not making any comment to you.
I'm speaking to everybody. It didn't, it wasn't, what, what's going on? What's going on? I'm not speaking direct, I just for everybody. We speaking on behalf of Mr. Haddago, yeah?
Joe, uh, you have no way of knowing this, but I had a conversation with the chief this afternoon, which I asked him whether the Haddago thing was coming up and he informed me it was not.
Right, so what happened is he left before it was actually brought up, so.
Okay, okay. Honestly, the chief wasn't here at the time. Okay, well, this is, I'm gonna make it real short, this is what happened to me. Six thirty in the morning, I'm getting up, getting ready to go to work and police officer knocked on the door. I come to the door and first thing, Mr. Haddago, he asked me, he says, any other grown-up in the house besides you? I said, nobody, I'm the only one here, what's the problem? He said, well, you need to get on the phone and go call somebody to come stay with these, these kids because, uh, we coming for you. I'm like, I don't know what's up, so I went in my room and he followed me. In my bedroom, I get on the phone and I called my dad because of the fact I knew he was lost the phone. And I asked him to go to the daycare to get friends, come home and stay with these kids. And I said, by the way, I said, meet me by the police station because of the fact they come to get me, for what, I don't know. As soon as I said, meet me by the police station, Haddago pulls out a gun, boom, puts it in my head, say, drop that F-ing phone right now. I told you to call somebody to come stay with these kids, not to meet at the police station. So, I dropped the phone, I don't know what's happening. He brings me outside, I get to ask some question, what y'all come get me for? Nobody sits there, they start questioning about, about my truck. Asked me a few questions, is this your truck? Yeah, it's my truck. Uh, do you, you don't wanna drive the truck? Yes, it's my truck, what's the problem? You're under arrest for stealing a four-wheeling trailer. Boom, they throw me on the ground, handcuffed me, Haddago put his foot in my neck while he had, they handcuffed me. They picks me up, the chief standing right there in the front of me, laughing. So, he says, man, we got you now. So, they took me to jail, I'm cutting all the short because, like I said, I wanna cut it short. They took me to jail, kept me in jail for four hours. And then he comes to me and tell me, uh, you were right, we started, we got the wrong guy. How can you do this? And, and everybody know who I am, I've been all over the world representing Eunice. Now, to hire somebody like this, that's up to y'all. I'm gonna get that out, out the way.
Your authority as council members to control the meeting. As you remember, last meeting, there were a lot of comments and yelling and, and, uh, comment from the audience that did not help this council conduct its business. And that's all I'm trying to do here as your attorney. Now, you also mentioned something I think ought to clarify. That you mentioned that the chief of police called me and asked me for some opinions. But that's my job, I do that for you.
Right, and, and, and I didn't say that your opinion was wrong, Mister McManus?
But I mean, I didn't want it to be like an inference that the chief and I were doing something that you weren't aware of. I've informed you of everything I've done, is that not correct?
That's correct, and that's why I knew that the chief had called you in reference to the item that I put on the agenda because you told me. Right, and what I was saying is the chief basically was trying to figure out a way of how to take my item off the agenda. Not that he wanted you to do it, but he was trying to figure out a way how to keep me from talking about this. I guess what I was saying, I should've explained it better, is that when the chief, he went to you to in turn figure out a way how to stop me or take my item.
He asked my opinion, legally, what can you do? And I explained that if the council wants it to be heard, then it's heard. If the council doesn't want it to be heard, it is not heard. It is not up to the chief. Incidentally, I might point out that the chief of police and the fire chief are not required by any law to be at these meetings. They have no part in this meeting unless you want them to be here and to report to you. But other than that, they have no part in this meeting. This is your meeting and the other council is yours.